Today's pastor may have the invocation, Mayor Proctor Finch will lead the invocation tonight.
Father, we thank you so much again for the opportunity to live in such a great town. Thank you for this cool weather you've sent us, Father. We thank you for the men and women who serve us daily through their many tasks. We pray for protection for them, for our public servants daily basis. We're afraid you'd give us wisdom as we consider the agenda tonight. We make decisions that benefit and that are wise for our whole town and our community. You give us the objectivity to be able to make those decisions clearly in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me signing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Please proceed. The time is seven oh four. I mean, welcome the officers, members of the staff and audience. Those who called in via Zoom and council to this regular town council meeting for Monday, September 14th. Today is the first regular meeting for the month of September. For the record, all council members except Mr. Freeman, is Eldridge on the line? Okay, so we got all council members except Mr. Freeman and Mr. Eldridge person with the five of the seven percent. We have called and the time is seven oh five. Okay, moving on to the first item, that's the presentation. That's the proclamation declaring September 17th, 2020 through September 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week in the town of Sunnyvale. So I'm going to read the proclamation here. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. And now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Sajid Jovic, do hereby declare and proclaim the week of September 17th, 2020 through September 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week in the town of Sunnyvale. And I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals or the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And it witness whereof I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Sunnyvale to be affixed this the 14th day of September, 2020.
And you do have somebody here to receive that proclamation from you, ma'am.
Mayor, if you'll also note, Mark Eldridge entered at 7:06.
Thank you. Okay, next is introduction, introduction of new employees. I'm going to call upon Chief House.
Got four new employees to introduce. When I call y'all's name, if you would come up here for me, please. Officer Nick Lewellen, Officer David Elliott, Officer Wesley Martinez and Officer Tommy Beddingfield. Officer David Elliott comes to us from Highland Village Police Department. Officer Elliott has family ties to Sunnyvale and has over four years patrol experience and currently holds a court security officer certification. Officer Nick Lewellen comes to us from the Dallas Independent School District Police Department and has over two years' experience and will be one of our newly appointed school resource officers beginning October 1st. He is a certified school-based law enforcement officer. Officer Wesley Martinez is a recent graduate of the Dallas Police Department Academy and Sunnyvale Police Department is his first appointment as police officer. Officer Tommy Beddingfield, the short guy over there.
Thanks.
Comes to us from the Murphy Police Department with over 11 years of experience in patrol. Officer Beddingfield is a U.S. Navy veteran, holds an advanced peace officer license, a TCO instructor and a certified field training officer. Please help me to welcome these officers.
If I've been missing one officer, I thought we had five listed.
Oh, I got you. Mayor, we got a new public works employee. His name is Jose Ramirez. He comes to us from the city of Dallas. He worked in their public works department for almost eight years. And he's a long-term resident of, resident of Mesquite. And I think his, I think our main selling point to getting here is our shop's about a minute and a half from his house.
So. Welcome Jose. Thanks, Brian, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you, new employees.
All right, I can open up an announcement pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. Council, our staff may report on various items as listed on the agenda. Council, other any announcements? Mr. Eldridge, do you have anything? Staff, do you have any announcements? Okay, if there are none, moving on to the next item, public forum. This is the time members of the audience may come and speak to the council on any items other than personal matters or legal matters or items listed on the agenda. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the council, please do so at this time. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the members of the audience, Erica, anyone raised their hand?
No hands raised.
Thank you, ma'am. No hands raised when I go across the public forum. Moving on to consent agenda items, we have item number three, four, five, six and seven on the consent agenda. Would anyone like to move any of the items on the consent agenda? Mayor? Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, okay, I'm going to ask for, can I have a motion with respect to item number three, four, five and seven? Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve consent agenda item three, four, five and seven to be approved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0, Mr. Freeman is out. Mr. Egan, item number six, please.
Mayor, I wanted this pulled out more just to make it more obvious as to what this resolution point is. This is something that, you know, I've got some old tractor tires that I'd like to get rid of. Probably got some old paint, some old solvents and things like that, too, that I never, you know, I know we have this ability to dispose of those things, but I don't know where and I don't know how. And I've been in this town a long time. We put out a newsletter that I've made some suggestions to town manager before about things that need to go in the newsletter. The town does a lot of things, but doesn't explain them very well. And this is one of them. We're passing this, we're going to spend money for it, but no one knows what to do with it. So I'm pointing this out because I think this is a good newsletter item, as are a bunch of other ordinances and things that people look at and say, well, why are you making us do that? Well, there's generally good logical reasons as to why. And when you explain them to people, they go, oh, okay, that's why. So if we could do that and maybe put something out a little bit more about this particular item, it would be appreciated particularly by me, but I'm sure some other people would probably appreciate it, too.
Sophie, do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, we actually used this several times and I'm glad we're a part of it. I know it's on Dallas County's website, but Mr. Egan's point is a great, it's great service and I've used it a bunch of times already, so I'm glad we're doing it.
Okay, so I'm hearing that there are changes to the item you just want to talk about.
No changes to the item, just wanted to point it out that this, this does exist for us and the town does pay for it. And, but the methodology of how to utilize it, I think, needs to be better positioned.
Okay, if there are no other discussions on this topic, can I have a motion to approve item number six as presented? Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve item number six as presented. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Finch. Everyone heard the motion or the additional discussions? If not, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two items, item number eight and nine. Item number eight, hold a public hearing and discuss the 2020, 2021 proposed budget. Ms. Hopkins, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This public hearing, as you said, is to discuss the 2021 proposed budget. And we also have an agenda item to discuss the 2020, 2021 tax rate. And what I'd like to point out is that both of these presentations are identical. So I'm going to spend a few minutes going through this slideshow and I'll be available for questions, but you can stop me at any time. Can you pull up my PowerPoint, please? Okay, can you go to the next slide, please? This slide is our schedule. And as you can see, we've been working on this budget since June. So we are now at the arrow where we're having the public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate. We will have the first reading of the budget and tax ordinance on September 17th and the second reading of the ordinance for the budget and tax rate on September 18th. Next slide. This proposed budget reflects adopting the same property tax rate as last year at point 456700. This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $564,902, which is an 11% increase from the last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is $335.15. The next point is just to show you what one cent in sales tax will get you either up or down. So one cent on the, I'm sorry, property tax, excuse me. Property tax will, each cent will generate $139,955 in tax revenue, whether it's up or down, and that's $39.20 in additional taxes on the average taxable income value. Next slide. This is a comparison of the taxable values and tax revenues from last year. The highlighted or the top portion of that is where you are right now. You have an MNO rate and an INS rate in the revenues generated by that rate. Since we decided to keep the tax rate the same, what you'll see is by doing that, you are going to reduce MNO by approximately $183,719. That is moving to your INS so that you can pay for the debt that you issued last year. The decrease in the MNO revenue was offset with non-property tax revenues such as sales taxes and construction, construction related fees. Next slide.
Yep, again, counsel, you noticed it for a $390,000 value house, which is, I'm assuming it's average in town. Town's property tax is $1,790. So when you think about the big tax bill we pay to the county, just kind of keep in mind, our portion is $1,790. Just kind of in perspective. Thanks, Ms. Hopkins.
You're welcome. This next slide, you see this every month in your monthly report. This is a, these are our benchmark cities that we compare ourselves to. So that's where we stand in relation to those benchmark cities.
Is that list of cities we compare for everything or mostly for tax? This?
This one's for tax. This is property tax rates.
So we have different benchmark group for different?
We try to stay consistent. Sometimes when we have studies done, those outside contractors will choose. And you'll see that later when we look at the water and wastewater study. They even take it even more broadly, but we try, we try to be consistent with our benchmark cities. And then the next slide. This is the property tax rate comparison from 2019 to 2020 and then our current 2020 to 2021. These rates, with the exception of the very top one, which is going to be your, the tax rate that you choose to approve, were calculated by the Dallas County Tax Office based on the taxable values provided and certified by the Dallas Central Appraisal District. Next slide. This is your projected fund balances based on this budget. And one thing I did not say at the beginning, this is a balanced budget, meaning your revenues are exactly the same as your expenses. So you, you have a balanced budget with this budget. This looks like a very busy screen, but if you want to look and see where you think your reserves are going to be with this budget, you would pick whichever fund you happen to be looking at and you can refer back to this. We will have with this budget, a reserve of $4,561,372 in the general fund. And that's approximately 180 days and that is 60 days above your approved policy. The next screen. What are we getting in this budget? What are the initiatives that are embedded within this budget? The sources of funds for the general fund is the MNO tax rate. The uses of funds is here. We have three additional fire department positions to replace part-time positions. We have this police support of 23 full-time positions, including two SRO positions. Development Services is adding an additional building inspector position. IT is going to do an INCODE 10 migration and IT penetration improvements. Parks is going to have additional special events funding. Townwide, it's going to fund the TEXDOT Advanced Funding Agreement for the US Highway 80 Right-of-Way Acquisition, William King Coal Training, Tate Training, Pioneer Award Facilitation Training Phase One and 2% merit increases for staff.
But just to clarify, on the police, the two SRO positions are also being supported by SISD in their budget, right? Just think it's important to point that out that we're not paying totally for that. SISD is supporting a portion of those salaries, correct?
Yes, and I have a, I have a slide that will illustrate that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we clarify that for anybody's watching. We're not paying for the schools position. They're actually paying their chair. Thank you.
The next slide. This is your general fund economic development. This is a new fund. This was, the source of funds for this was funded by the voter-approved dissolution of the 4A. This will be used by the town, it will be used for identified town council initiatives based on their strategic plan. So this fund is for future land acquisition and economic development. The next slide. Water Revenue Fund, that is funded by your ratepayers. The Water Revenue Fund provides water, wastewater, garbage services throughout town. It maintains existing infrastructure and identifies new initiatives through the capital improvement project process. It also funds the 8th Advance Funding Agreement with TEXDOT for utility relocation on State Highway 352. It provides the debt service for the Harris Edition sewer line improvements. And then also this year is providing debt service support to the general fund or the debt service fund with the transfer in. The next slide. This slide is part of the 2018 Water and Wastewater Study. And at the top, this is again, when I talk about benchmark cities, these were the benchmarks that K-PACs used in, in this particular study. This compares us in the year 2023 as opposed to our peer groups. And currently, the cost for 10,000 gallons on a one-inch residential meter is $115. So we are below what we think we're going to be in 2013, but we do have a rate, tier rate structure that changes each October 1st. Debt service, the uses of, the sources of funds for the debt service is your INS rate. And it went up over 4% due to the project or the debt that we, that we put out for projects. They include existing and new projects. US Highway 80 Bridge Construction and Service Center or our Public Works Building, Police Department Facility at 364 Long Creek, formerly the DSO substation. And we will make the last payment on that, excuse me, that facility in 2021. The Collins Road Expansion Phase One, Police Department Stand-Up Costs, Drainage Along Trip Road and the Collins Road Phase Two Design. Construction of the fire station and other eligible projects and to pay for the construction of the water tower. Next, the Road Impact Fund. The sources, impact fees paid by developers and new construction. And the Road Impact Fund is helping to complete the Collins Road Phase One Intersection Improvements. Water and sewer impact funds, again, the source of funds is impact fees paid by developers and construction. It provides the debt service on the waterline improvements at the US Highway 80 and Collins Road Bridge. It funds the impact fee study that is currently underway. And it funds the payment to the Texas Department of Agriculture loan associated with the Millard Expansion. And that's been going on since 2010. It was negotiated in 2010. Your capital improvement projects, these funds are where we track the Your capital improvement projects, these funds are where we track the, um, expenses for the projects. So you have the debt, the debt service fund that pays the debt that you borrowed. These funds here track the spending of that borrowed money, um, on all of our capital improvement projects. Again, you're going to hear some of the same projects. Collins Road Phase One, Police Department Stand-Up, Drainage Improvement Along Trip Road and Jobson Road, Fire Station Design and Construction, Harris Edition Sewer Lines, Payment to Text Dot for the Barnes Bridge Replacement, and to be determined eligible infrastructure. And, uh, Councilman Fitch, this is where you're going to see that SRO contract come into play. If you look down at your police department, this is, um, this is where we track the spending and the funds available to complete these projects. So if you look at the police department, you see that we borrowed three million five hundred thousand. We had seventy-five, six twenty-four come in. That's your SOR contract with the SISD. And then you have your expenses going out. So that fund right now, or as of seven thirty-one, had, uh, two million, one thirty-two, three forty-five in it.
And that SRO contract in year one was paying a share of the vehicle acquisition and the equipment acquisition. And then when the new fiscal year starts, we'll go into sharing of cost of the SRO officers.
The uniqueness about the capital improvement projects is that these projects have a set budget and a funding source year over year until project is complete. Um, I believe you remember we came back with you, uh, and showed you our five-year CIP plan, uh, which is required by charter. It's just a matter of how much you want to borrow to move forward with some of those projects. Four B Economic Development Corporation, the sources of funds for this fund are sales tax. The uses of funds are incentives, the Parks Master Plan, Downtown Development Study, Rails to Trails Phase One Action Items, Concept Plan Action Items for Glacier Barn slash Stables, Promotional Services to Include Business Development and Special Events. And they support the park maintenance for Jobson Vineyard and Town Center Park with the transfer in to the general fund on an annual basis. Homestead amenities, this fund, the sources are developer agreements and are restricted by ordinance. This fund is currently supports, um, the completion of the Collins Road Phase One. Special Revenue, Special Revenue is extremely restricted funds. These include donations. For example, the Atmos donation to the Fire Department, library grants and donations, special events donations, Health and Human Services stimulus. That was a fire initiative as a result of COVID. Your CARES Act funding, Fire Department donations, tree mitigations, and citation-related fees. Every time someone pays, um, almost every time someone pays a citation, there are fees collected that are very restricted in use. And one of the projects that they did fund this year was the security improvements to the front counters. The PEG Capital Access, this is a static fund. We do not have cable or TV station streaming of official meetings. My hope is that, um, the legislature will go back and take into account how we've come with technology and maybe free that money up for other ways that we can reach out to the public, but that's not happened. So we did, or the council did, make the decision not to collect these franchise fees from our customers since we were not, excuse me, utilizing them. But there, there is some money there. So that is my presentation. The INCODE Report follows. It has line item by line item, uh, and it has very specific notes. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, let me, let me open up a public comments if I may, with the council. So this is the public hearing item, agenda items. So I'm going to open up a public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, or if you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the members of the audience. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised on item number eight. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, um, are there any questions or discussion for Ms. Hopkins? So do we take an action on this or we just, it's a public hearing only? Okay, council, if there are none, are you good with, uh, moving forward to item number nine? Okay, Ms. Hopkins, number nine.
Okay, number nine is to hold a public hearing and discuss the two thousand twenty-one proposed tax rate. And as I said, the presentation is exactly the same, but if you'd like to back up and look at some of the slides and you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Again, this is a public hearing agenda item, so I'm going to call for public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the members of the audience. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number nine? There are none, I must, there are no actions for either, either, right? Okay, so with that, um, we will close item number nine. We will move on to page number two seventy-two in your package item. That is item number ten. Discuss, consider, and act upon any recommended changes to the proposed budget. I guess there are none in this case, correct? So, no actions for that either? Good with that? Wow, they're moving fast. And I jinxed it. Item number eleven, discuss, consider, and act upon placing and ordinance adopting the tax rate on the agenda for the first meeting, meeting, first reading on this Thursday, September seventeen, twenty twenty, at seven PM. And for the second reading and adoption Friday, September eighteen, twenty twenty, at nine AM. Ms. Hopkins?
Counsel, this is a staff recommendation, um, to put it on the, uh, on the record and memorialize it in writing.
Okay, do I take public comments on this one? Ms. Brenda? Okay. I'm going to take public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the members of the audience. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments on item number eleven. Item number eleven? Okay. So how does the motion?
Well, it, so the, the law says that we have to either take action or take an action that we're going to vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Or put it at a future date. So just, if the motion could be, um, kind of exactly what's stated in that item, that those are the dates that we're going to take action.
Mayor, I might, I might motion that we have a first reading on Thursday, September seventeen, at seven PM. And a second reading and adoption Friday, September eighteen, at nine AM for the budget as presented to them. For the tax rate as presented to them.
Okay, so the motion made by Mr. Egan to adopt the tax rate of point zero point four five six seven zero zero. Uh, and the first reading will be on Thursday, September seventeen, twenty twenty, at seven PM. And the second reading and adoption on Friday, September eighteen, twenty twenty, at nine AM. Did I get that right, Mr. Egan?
So moved. Second?
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Mr. Freeman is absent. Moving on to, item number twelve. Discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, which made appropriations for the support of the Town of Sunnyvale for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and amending the annual budget of the Town of Sunnyvale for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. Ms. Hopkins?
Mayor and Council, I'm going to let Phyllis, um, take this by.
Phyllis, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On May the twenty-sixth, the town entered into an interlocal agreement with Dallas County for the administration and distribution of the CARES Act funds, an amount which was allocated to the town in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars for authorized CARES Act expenditures. The town manages these funds through the Special Revenue Fund, and an amendment is needed to incorporate the funding and the related expenditures. Erica, if you could pull up that on.
Report.
They have it in there.
Okay. If you have it there, that, that first document there is really just an all-fund summary of the components that make up the Special Revenue Fund. And you can see there, uh, the CARES Act COVID nineteen, the addition of, uh, a budget amendment for the revenues of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, as well as the budgeted expenses for the same dollar amount of three seventy-six, two fifty-five. The INCODE Report follows that. And those changes to that particular line item will show the three hundred and seventy-six thousand coming in and the expenditures.
Counsel, today we have a seventy-eight thousand expenditure, and we have a two hundred and ninety cent balance.
Right, and we, we meet on a bi-weekly basis to go over proposals for expenditures, and then we send them to Dallas County. We get approval from them, and then we can move forward with expenditures. So we're on a pretty tight timeline, as you and I have discussed. So I think we have, we're moving along with several plans and, um, also tallying all of our personnel expenses related to COVID. But those are ongoing, so it's kind of a moving target. So what we're doing is we're pulling it into the budget here. If we don't spend it, it'll roll over because it's Special Revenue into next year's budget. And then we'll have until October thirtieth, thirty-first to get reports into Dallas County for what we plan to spend that on.
I'm going to open up for public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, on item number twelve, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hand?
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number twelve? If there, there are none, can I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty dash twenty-one as presented? Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number twelve as presented. Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Hopkins. Moving on to item number thirteen. Discuss, consider, and act upon resolution twenty dash twenty-five, a resolution of the Town of Sunnyvale approving, entering, entering into an interlocal agreement with the North Central Texas Emergency Communications District or Emergency nine-one-one communication service and authorize the town manager to execute the contract. Ms. Catherine?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, just a little walk down memory lane. On July twenty-second, twenty nineteen, you voted unanimously to pass an ordinance to establish your own police department. Seems like a long time ago, but it's really only been a little over a year ago. On March twenty-third, twenty twenty, you further voted to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Town of Seagoville to provide dispatch and jail services to the Town of Sunnyvale. We then went on to, um, work with CSEC to become our own nine-one-one entity, um, which then kind of paved the way to be able to contract with Seagoville. But with, as part of that, we also needed to contract with NCT nine-one-one to actually provide the nine-one-one routing services. So this is kind of the final little piece of the puzzle. So we're very, very excited to get to this point. As I think I've mentioned before, the cutover from Dallas County Dispatch to Seagoville will take place on September twenty-eighth and right in time for our official turnover on October first. So it's just, um, we do need to pass this interlocal agreement by passing this resolution, and that'll be the last piece of the puzzle.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. I'm going to take public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number thirteen, you may do so at this time. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Uh, Ms., uh, Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions or questions on item number thirteen? If there are none, I call for a motion.
Motion for item thirteen as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number thirteen as presented, second by Mr. Egan. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Moving on to item number fourteen. Mr. Brian Creed, discuss, consider, and act upon first reading of ordinance twenty dash twenty-five and ordinance amending ordinance thirteen dash fifteen and ordinance fourteen dash thirteen regulating traffic in certain areas of the town, amending Article twelve point three zero zero, street limits established, Section B one, subsection B two of Article twelve three zero zero of the Sunnyvale Town Court to adjust the extent, extent and boundaries of the school zone on North Collins Road, providing for severability, providing for publication by caption, and providing an effective date. Mr. Creed, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the only thing we need to adjust, we adjusted the boundaries last year. But now the school has decided that, uh, high school doesn't let out till four thirty. And they also extended the middle school and the elementary to go till three fifty, and that threw some discharge or dismissals outside of our current times in our, in our ordinance. So, uh, they also decided to let, uh, students out early on Fridays, which we didn't have anything around noon for that. And we had to change it by ordinance where we could change the lights. So that's all that does is we're going to shift the times to go from two, they're right now, they're two forty-five to four fifteen, and we're going to move them to three fifteen to five fifteen. It's a broader time span, but the dismissals are further apart than they used to be. There's a forty-minute difference between the, uh, what would be grammar school kids and the secondary school kids when they get out. So they have this real broad time span to cover everything we felt like we needed to.
Okay, turn on and turn off, or we had to keep it? Well, it's for the public.
Yeah, it's, I figure it's better to leave it running, uh, rather than have it off for thirty minutes in between. I mean, we'll do whatever the council wants, but I thought that might be better just to have the, the time span lengthened for that additional thirty, thirty minutes.
Do we have to enact an ordinance every time the school changes their times, or can we say in concurrent with the school times? Or can we say, can we be blanket about whatever the school deems, or do we have to be specific, Brenda, in our ordinance?
Right, because I'm guessing it's going to change.
It's going to change, and so we're going to be doing this again.
Right. In order to prosecute in municipal court, you have to be specific with the times set forth in the ordinance.
So we can't say the times that a school is releasing or whatever. We have to be sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred or whatever.
Right. It's very specific.
Okay, I got you. I'll be quiet.
I will change the signs accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. I'm going to take public comments. I'll tell you what, since he's here, council, are there any questions for Mr. Creed at this time? Thanks, Brian. Okay, I'm going to take public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. Or if you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the members of the audience, uh, anyone raising their hand, Ms. Erica?
No hands raised.
No hands raised. I'm close to public comments, council. Are there additional discussions? There are none, I call for a motion, item number fourteen.
Motion to approve item fourteen as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Egan to approve item number fourteen as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number, thank you, Brian, Mr. Creed. Uh, moving on to item number fifteen. Consider and act upon resolution twenty dash forty-four as resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, declaring certain property as surplus and authorize the town manager to execute the sale, trade, donation or disposal of said property. Ms. Guthrie?
I think Ms. Hopkins can do this part.
Oh, Ms. Hopkins. You ready?
Mayor and council, um, this is so that we can get rid of some obsolete, um, technology that we have. I believe that Joseph put together, uh, with the help of other staff members, a very extensive list of what we would like to, um, claim as surplus. Um, and it's really just a matter of getting rid of some obsolete technology now that Joseph's here and he's bringing us up to the current technology standards. And we threw some, you know, some other things in there that we felt like we needed to get rid of. Yeah, nine mice, those would be.
What's that?
The mice or the, you're not the. No, they don't, they don't take traps.
Have we, do we still have that single, one-eyed cat we used to have?
No, but he, he left.
You're not talking about that? None of you know, maybe Liz will know that.
Yeah, but the cat.
That you speak town cats, right?
He was our mascot.
All right. Thank you, Joseph, thanks, uh, Liz. I'll take public comments on this topic. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number fifteen, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forwards, I'm going to, uh, uh, Ms., Ms., Erica, anyone raising their hand? Now, hands raised, I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number fifteen?
Mayor, I have one question. Is there a, uh, do we have two people talking?
That was me, sorry, Larry. Go ahead.
And do we have a, uh, document process that keeps record of what we access?
Yeah, it's part of that agenda. The list is attached to the back of it. So.
Sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry. The list of surplus items is in exhibit A.
On, on.
My agenda stopped, but that's okay, I just want.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and we delineate every item that we're going to declare surplus.
So for our funds, when you get back two ninety-seven, page number two ninety-seven, half the list. I know.
I got one question. So they mentioned that this is obsolete stuff, but I see on here there's a cassette player. I mean, that's not that obsolete.
We'll sell it for ten thousand, ten thousand dollars. All right. Are there any other questions? Did I take public comments on this, Erica? Okay.
Mayor, I have one more question. Do we have to do this every time we access data or documents or property? Or can that be?
I believe that, and Brenda can chime in too. I think you can adopt a policy that kind of gives me ongoing authority to do that. Um, just in, you know, my history, best practice is to come forward so that it's very transparent about what's leaving the city but, or the town, but that's your call. If you guys want me to.
This happened so rarely, right? Not like.
We, we do it as well, but we just document it and access it by law. Thank you. I'm just trying to save a step, come to the council for that, if that's possible. Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there are no other discussions or questions, can I have a motion with respect to item number fifteen, please? Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve item number fifteen as presented, second by Mr. Allen. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If that none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number sixteen. Discuss, consider and act upon resolution twenty dash forty-six, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, authorizing the town manager to execute an interlock agreement with the Dallas County, Texas, for participation in the memorandum of understanding, interlock agreement among participating local governments for law enforcement data sharing via Dallas County Adult Information Systems. Chief?
Mayor and council, this is a, uh, this is a standard MOU for this, uh, database that all law enforcement agencies in Dallas County uh, use to access and share, uh, suspect information and, and incident narratives and, and that type of stuff. Uh, our town attorney's firm has looked over it and didn't see any major issues with it.
Two separate, one for adult, one for juvenile.
Uh, this is, yeah, this. Yes, yes, sir. They're all standard, uh, MOUs. Um, they're different systems. The AIS is for adult, and then we have the Tech Share, which is, um, juvenile.
Thank you, chief. And take, I'm going to take public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who would like to speak to the council on item number sixteen, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the chamber, Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions or questions on item number sixteen? If there are none, I call for a motion. Motion approved. Motion made by Mr. Finch, second by Mr. Clark to approve item number sixteen as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number seventeen. Discuss, consider and act upon resolution twenty dash fifty-one, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, authorizing the town manager to execute an interlock agreement, memorandum of understanding with the participating local government and Dallas County to speak in urban counties Tech Share juvenile program, chief.
Now, Mayor and council, this is the other program that we use to digitally file cases with the district attorney and also to start the process. If we arrest a juvenile and take them downtown, uh, we, we immediately put them in this computer system.
Thank you, chief. I'm going to open up for public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who would like to speak to the council on item number seventeen, please come forward. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward from the chamber, Erica, anyone raising their hand?
Yes, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comment. Council, are there any questions or discussions on item number seventeen? If there are none, I call for a motion. So, yeah. Motion made by Mr. Egan, second by Mr. Finch to approve item number seventeen as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there any discussions? There are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Moving on to item number eighteen. Discuss, consider and act upon resolution twenty dash fifty-two, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, authorizing the town manager to execute an interlock agreement, memorandum of understanding for criminal justice, information sharing via Dallas County Tech Share Prosecutor, TSP, chief.
Mayor and council, this is the adult version of the juvenile Tech Share where we will use to file our cases with the district attorney and mainly be used by Detective Sergeant Evans in CID and our Police Services Coordinator, Ms. Whit.
Thank you, chief. I'm going to open up for public comments. If there are anyone from the members of the audience who would like to speak to the council, you may come forward at this time. If you're calling in via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when it's coming forward, Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No hands raised.
No hands raised to the Zoom, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions or questions on item number eighteen? If there are none, I call for a motion. Second, motion made by Ms. Egan, second by Mr. Finch to approve item, item number eighteen as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there any discussions? If there are none, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Thank you, council. Moving on to item, thank you, chief. Moving on to item number nineteen. This received status update regarding the timeline and implementation of the police department.
Mayor and council, we've got, uh, six officers in training and various stages of training. All of them are experienced officers except, uh, Mr. Martinez. So his training will be prolonged, but we will have enough, uh, manpower to cover all four shifts as of October first and also have the two SROs in place.
Tell me again, did you say four shifts?
Yes.
Can, can you elaborate on that?
They're twelve-hour shifts. Um, so you'll have two day shifts and two night shifts. We've also are transitioning from, um, or as is, is the e-ticket rider that has been used in the past. Part of our, uh, record management system, uh, was, uh, a new, a new e-ticket system was included in that for a small cost of five thousand versus, um, quite a bit more than we were paying with the other company. And so we're, we're working with crimes now to get that implemented, implemented, and the target date is by the end of this week.
Awesome. So chief, uh, as far as staffing is concerned, are we fully staffed now?
No, sir, we still have, uh, two openings.
Okay, so twenty-three, twenty, you have twenty-one now.
Yes, sir. That'll be total, we have nineteen and plus two SRO positions, so it'll be twenty-one total.
And then you and Angie on top of that, right?
No, uh, Angie's not included in that total, but I am. So it'd be twenty-two full-time employees.
Not twenty-three?
No, sir.
Okay, somehow I thought I said twenty-three. Details, I got it. Um, so, so we are still going to have a recognition, last, next council, eighteen, twenty-eight is the last regular council before the transition, right?
Yes, they have been ordered, sir.
So council staff is working on some sort of recognition for the outgoing business. So they served this town for a long, long time. Many of them did a very good job, so. Chief, anything else, sir?
The, the twenty-three might include the HR position.
Oh, that's what.
Yes. So twenty-three total.
Yeah.
It's just twenty-three total positions in the police department, and you're right.
Okay. Anything else, chief?
No, sir.
Any questions for chief?
Yes, question. So there's two more openings for, uh, police officers.
Yes, we've got, uh, one applicant. She's in the final stages. She has to go through a couple extra steps, uh, required by the state because she's had more than a one-hundred-and-eighty-day break in her license being carried. So she has to do a couple other, um, steps. So she's taking a little bit longer. And then I think we have, uh, one more test coming up for the final position.
Right, okay, thanks.
So, anything else for chief? Chief, I can see the police officers everywhere. Thank you so much for the presence. Uh, people appreciate seeing them. Beautiful car, beautiful vehicle, everything is good, so, uh, it's going to be a big deal. We look forward to it. Count, uh, thank you, chief. Item number twenty. Mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items. Council, are there any items, all of us?
Um, one request. Could we get an, um, update on Trip Road? On the construction of the Trip Road and roundabouts? Just how it's going, if it's on schedule and what's up?
Chipper Collins. Chipper Collins.
Sorry, Collins, Collins.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Anything else? Okay, if there are none, um, can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D of the Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one dot oh eight seven, economic development. Uh, there are two, three items, Project DC, Project PC, Project WB. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion adjourn, into executive session.
Motion made by Mr. Clark and second by Mr. Allen to adjourn into executive session. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. The time is eight oh nine. We are in executive session. All opposed, motion passed six oh. The time is eight oh nine. We are in executive session. All opposed, motion passed six oh. The time is eight oh nine. We are in executive session. All opposed, motion passed six oh. The time is eight oh nine. We are in executive session.